The City Council meeting of the City of Hudson for Monday, June 2nd. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Yakub.
Here.
District three, McCormick.
Here.
District four, Weber.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslow.
Here.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council tonight on any item that's not on the agenda? Now is your chance. So is there anyone here that would like to talk to the council about any other item that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to discussion and possible consent agenda items. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular enclosed session meeting minutes of May 19th, 2014, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $331,194.81, a detailed description is available on request in the Clerk's office and is posted on the city's website. To approve 12 regular operators licenses for the period June 3rd, 2014 to June 30th, 2016.
Can you pull those, please?
To approve the Highway 35 Water Main Project with Total Excavating LLC as recommended by the Water Commission and authorize the mayor to sign the contracts. To accept the petition for annexation from SSHD Incorporated regarding 12.3 acres north of the intersection of Stageline Road and Old Highway 35 and forward it to the Plan Commission and staff for review and recommendations. To place on file the 2014 Library Director's Report and the Hudson, North Hudson Community Access Board Meeting Minutes from May 27th, 2014. That's all. Move for approval.
Second.
Yakub?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Motion to approve? Oh, we just did that, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion on those? We'll go back to item, um, operators license. Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself. Okay. Is there a motion to approve operators license?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
In need discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4F was pulled. It's a special event permit reduction of insurance requirement for designation of a community event for the Hudson Boosters. Catherine has some issues or questions on the, on...
Yeah, we're looking for guidance from the council on this. In the past, I haven't really been reviewing the insurance certificates that the applicants file, and we've found that just looking over the past couple of years, that they've been inconsistent. This year, I've gotten the insurance certificates to review and I've compared them to the ordinance, and they're not always lining up. And the boosters, and this is no fault of the applicants, it's just that there's insurance requirements in the ordinance, I'm reviewing it now, and I need guidance from the council if there isn't, it isn't consistent with the ordinance. And if you remember, with nonprofits and community events, there's been a policy or practice of the council to reduce the requirements from 3 million general liability and 3 million umbrella, down to 1 million general and 1 million umbrella, because they came to the council when this was first adopted, instituted, and said they were having trouble getting the $3 million level, and it was very expensive. And so for nonprofits and community events, generally, that's been the practice, although it's been inconsistent. Some have submitted, gotten insurance for a million general liability and the umbrella, some haven't. Boosters is, I think the council will need to look at this generally, but since the boosters event is coming up quickly, and we won't have a, it'll, you know, not be very long before it comes, their insurance certificate doesn't include the umbrella. This is what they have submitted in the past with just 1 million general liability, and I just need guidance because I don't have authority to adjust that requirement. The council does under the ordinance, I think, based on past practice, until you have an opportunity to review, you could decide, you know, what we've, what they've done in the past is sufficient. If you believe they should have the million, general and million umbrella, you can decide that as well. We have been communicating with them and explaining the requirements, so they're aware of it, but their response was, well, this is what we've supplied in the past, and that's correct. Our practice has been inconsistent.
I think what they've done has been fine, in my opinion, and if, if we need to look at our policy, then we'll do that on our own, but I'm okay approving what they've submitted.
I am as well.
Catherine, there's only one comment, you know, we talked a little bit on the phone, it was that they have an aggregate of 3 million according to this rather than 2 million.
It's 1-3.
It's 1-3.
Oh, I must, I have a March...
Must be an old one.
Certificate.
Well, this one says 1 million, 3 million.
Mm-hmm. I...
Yeah, they're generals, 3 aggregate.
Okay.
I just, I know, I saw that.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
Well, that's all right, but it, it's still not, it's still not the 2 million, or what it is.
It doesn't have the umbrella.
Oh, I...
There's no umbrella, yeah.
The aggregate is up to 3 million versus 2 million.
Oh, okay, got it.
So, it still doesn't have the, it still doesn't have the umbrella.
So is that a... I'll move to approve as is.
I'll second it.
Discussion, anybody?
What, what liability does it bring the city into any? I mean, is it really a matter of contention here?
Well, we're a million dollars, we're a million dollars less in coverage.
Coverage, so if something did happen...
Come to our insurance.
So that's...
If it exceeds the million dollar for the one...
Well, maybe yes, maybe no. I mean, the city does not, the only involvement the city has for the most part is reviewing their event. They supply, they operate it, they manage it, they're in charge of it. So the city isn't, unless there's some negligence on the part of the city, it's just that whenever you're involved in a permit process, and there's something that happens, you're a target.
Okay.
Okay. And vendors carry their own insurance for the event.
This, this is a, uh, special events though.
Right.
So they fall under the boosters, I believe.
They do.
That's what we did, right?
They just don't have to get a separate permit.
Correct.
Oh, right.
I assume they would still have their own insurance.
They don't have any insurance, yeah.
Going forward, are you, are we gonna require 1-3 or 1-2?
I, I think it should be put on a future agenda so we can get a consistent, the reason it was at 3 million is because if there, there may be some events, it was on recommendation of the city's insurer, that are larger events, involve more rigorous type activities, for example, there's some sort of extreme type fitness event going on in St. Joseph this summer. In those situations, a 3 million might make sense, but I think the city should, the council should look at it so we get our practice consistent with what we want.
But at the same time, being, not to encumber the boosters from putting on their events, I don't want to do that.
No, I understand.
If, if it encumbers what they're doing.
Well, that discussion can be placed, yeah.
At a later date, that's right, yeah.
So what's on the special event permit application? Does it require the, does it say 3 in, okay.
I believe it does, that's our policy.
The ordinance does, I'm not sure what the application for.
I don't think it, the application is...
Nancy's saying yes.
Yeah.
We've never done it, we've basically set a precedence here, and we're three weeks away or a month away. We gotta look at it later.
We've done this for the booster, we've done it for the hot air fare.
It's been inconsistent, different organizations have submitted different...
But the ordinance has stated allows us to make the difference.
To make the adjustments, yes.
And I think when we consider it, we have to consider how their budgets are as well. Are they a nonprofit, are they a for-profit? I mean, it costs a lot of money to get an umbrella, we have to look to see.
I, I think we should look at also the risk to the city, I mean, that's a...
Yeah.
But again, I, we can be, we can try and, my understanding, the big liar, higher liability limits were put in to avoid a, I think they were trying to do a rock concert in Lakefront Park, and they couldn't get that kind of liability and insurance. This was 15 years ago. I don't know, who was here then? Devin?
Well, it was, we asked the city's insurer, what would you recommend we put in this ordinance, and that's what they recommended.
Probably 10 years ago.
Probably 10 years.
But it was to cover larger events that may occur even on private property.
Right.
Not necessarily just on city property.
Okay, enough. Any other discussion, questions, comments? We'll, we'll put it on the agenda for later, for later on, if that's okay with everybody.
But yeah, right now, so you're, you want to approve the booster event with that.
Correct.
Proviso.
There's a motion, can I second it?
Yep, and a second, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, discussion, possible action, I believe, on the CSM for the Hudson Memorial Hospital. Danny?
Plan Commission recommends approval of the certified survey map, or also known as CSM, creating one development lot and two outlots as proposed by the Hudson Memorial Hospital, and also recommend that a variance be approved of the requirements of, of the sanitary, sanitary sewer and water services to be installed prior to the filing of the CSM, or providing a surety of 125% of the estimated cost. So anytime you create a lot, you must also provide sanitary sewer and water services. If you do not, to file the, file that document, you have to provide a surety of 125%. Because, and then the recommendation continues, and that the installation of utilities be deferred as part of the proposed Presbyterian Homes Housing Assisted Housing Project, with the stipulation, the utilities must be installed no later than September 30th, 2014. The city attorney prepare a development agreement to address the scheduling and installation of utility services. The reason we've asked for that September 30th, 2014 date is, if something happens with the Presbyterian Homes project, doesn't move ahead, we still want the utilities installed to the, to the property line. Now, the reason September 30th was chosen, because they would have to break into the street, we want the utilities installed before that so we can do street restoration, so we don't have an, you know, unpaved street section on Stageline Road over the winter time. I guess there'd be a question if, for some reason, there was unforeseen circumstances that the utilities couldn't be installed until September 30th, we'd bring the issue back and, and re-review it, but, so the, now the certified survey map itself creates three parcels, one development parcel for the proposed Presbyterian Homes and Services Housing Project, 12.3 acres, and two outlots, one 2.20 acres, which would be a future development phase of the Presbyterian Homes project, and then one outlot would be retained by the Hudson Medical, or Hudson Memorial Hospital or Health Partners in the future. Again, if those parcels proceed with development, then we'd come back and those, the status of those outlots would change a lot, so those would be re-reviewed at that time.
Okay.
A move for approval based on staff recommend, committee recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions for Danny on this? This is pretty standard.
Well, the variance is a little different, but if we, you know, if the project wasn't imminent this summer.
Yep.
The Presbyterian Homes would be a different circumstance.
Okay. Again, I'll ask if anybody has any questions for Danny, if not. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Donald, discussion and possible action of final development plans for two commercial buildings at the Hudson Center Commercial Development.
The final development plans for the two 11,300 square foot commercial buildings, Lot 4, Hudson Center Commercial Development, north of Crestview Drive and the east and south of Badger Drive. Again, this is part of the former visitor center site on the north side of Crestview Drive and just west of the Taco Bell site. This project's been a little unusual in the fact that the certified survey map was held up in regards to land trades and considerations with the Taco Bell site. The Plan Commission recommended, recommendation is to approve the final development plans for the proposed Hudson Center Commercial Development, including two 11,170, the difference between 11,171 and 11,300, the plans changed slightly since the Plan Commission looked at it. To be approved with the following conditions, plans be revised per the city engineer's memo of November 11th. There's three considerations, very minor, have to do a signage on drive-through lanes and a couple of catch basin locations. The security of $6,000 be provided to the City of Hudson to address potential damage to the accesses on Badger Drive. That a start of the construction permit be recommended on the west building, again, the west building is, is probably about two-thirds the way done. And that a recommendation of final development plans will not be forwarded to the common council till after the land exchange is completed with the property to the east Taco Bell and the revised subdivision be approved by the city. Again, subdivision was approved by the city on March 10th, 2014, recorded on May 19th, 2014, so those conditions have been met.
Okay.
Mr. Dave Rob, David Robson's here tonight from Hudson Center, if you have any questions on the proposed project. I think it's moving well, head very well, and hopefully we have both buildings up before summer's end.
I will move for approval based on committee recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Robson, would you like to tell us who's gonna be in there, or don't you want to say it this time?
I can't say it.
Okay. Everyone's asking, so we just, so we thought we'd ask.
Ah, there you go.
Okay.
Disappointed a lot.
Not fair, Josie said.
Yeah. Okay. All, any discussion? Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Danny.
It's not...
Finance Committee, discussion, possible action of additional on-street parking on First Street. Danny, you want to go back up, or shall I take it? You did such a fine job at finance, I thought you could...
I was gonna make sure I got my reports here. Yeah, I'm shuffling my reports around, just a moment, please. Thank you.
Take your time.
Do you want this to?
No, I've got it right here, right here. Thank you. Yeah, on-street parking on First Street is proposed on the west side of First Street. The first area is north of Locust Street, essentially between the FIP Center for the Arts and the Lakefront Park Beach Parking Lot, then extend a little bit farther north in Vine Street, but the city owns land between Vine Street and the small houses on the west side of First Street. The net number of on-street parking stalls that would be gained is, or the total net of parking stalls would be 38, there'd be 46 that'd be installed on First Street, and as part of that project, we'd lose eight stalls within the Lakefront Beach Parking Lot. The second area is at the intersection of Wisconsin Street and First Street, again on the west side, so that's off the northwest corner of the River City Center Commercial Area, and again, 10 stalls would be constructed in the south, and then additional 20 stalls could be installed between Wisconsin Street and the north side of the Boat Ramp Parking Lot. So the total net would be 68 additional stalls. The cost, estimated cost, we think are relatively conservative, total cost would be $533,000, and with a net of approximately $7,850 per stall, again, it'd be a net of 68 stalls. Maybe, you can repeat the Finance Committee recommendation, I...
Great. The Committee approved it to have three different bids, all one project, and then one and two. I think Rich, it was, wanted to say, let's try the first one first, let's see how the costs are. When Danny says conservative, it means, we hope this is really high, and it'll be a lot less. If you remember our parking study, the parking study for a ramp was almost $19,000 a spot, so this is significantly less, and we have money available in our, in our parking fund of about $98,000 that we could use for this, and we could borrow from the carryover...
Capital projects.
Capital projects, carryover, and pay that back as we generate, Neil, 30, $48,000 a year? How much was the exact?
30.
30?
We generate roughly $30,000 a year, but then you're gonna have some additional work from these spots too.
Right. Okay.
And then the moose as they pay, the smiling moose as they pay can help pay that back as well.
Correct. We also have some money coming in from the new stores in town, one of the restaurants in town. That's over a seven-year period.
Yes, something I did not mention at the Finance Committee is that there is a 20% contingency on engineering, legal, so forth. This project would have to be designed, these are preliminary cost estimates, so there's still a design element that'd have to be done, so we have documents to go out for bids, so...
Well, legal will be way cheaper than that.
Of course.
Okay.
It's free.
It's free, yeah. Any thoughts, comments, questions? Yes, sir?
What's, uh, see sidewalk costs are not included in that. Is there an estimate of what that's gonna be, because it's not complete without rebuilding those sidewalks?
I think the sidewalk, we're gonna get the bid on that, only if we do the other, the part on the south end, correct?
Yeah, sidewalks are in, in conjunction with the south, 30 stalls, essentially sidewalks go all the way down First Street till you get to the south end of the on-street parking on First Street, and then there's like additional 10 stalls, but really, we need to get connectivity between any of those new stalls, the parks, so that people aren't having your, go all the way back to the trail system next to the river, or walk in the street. We need to get a sidewalk system that keeps people off the street and safe, but no, Jim, there's no cost of estimate at that, at this point for that. Yes, but that would be up to the south 30 stalls, so...
Yep. But I think it's important, that's gotta be part of the project as far as...
And it would be designed in, then we'd get a cost on that, correct?
Correct.
Correct. We don't have a cost on that, but we also have park funds that, from those, to be able to pay for those.
Yeah, there's been a recent issue brought to the park board about adding some additional sidewalks, connectivity to the south side of the park, and then that project would, would be part and parcel to this sidewalk, so we could connect the parking areas also.
Thoughts and comments on this? Anything, any other questions?
Which part do you want to do first?
Priority area would be on the north side of 38, 46 stalls with a net of 38, so it'd be the area between FIP Center and Bath House Parking Lot.
But as I mentioned in Finance, I want everyone to keep in mind that we're going to have, to want to complete the park system with sidewalks, and if we're gonna rip up the south end to do that, we should put, we would want to consider adding those stalls as well, which is why we, we're gonna bet it out in parts, just so we can see the differences, but there's no point ripping things up twice, in my opinion, so...
Well, and it's currently about to resurface the whole street, and we're fixing curb where that won't be anymore.
We haven't, we haven't done it on the curb.
Well, we didn't do that on the north end.
We waited on the curb.
Yeah, I see that, I, yeah.
We waited on purpose.
I've been down here every day. I have also recommended or put on a future agenda for the Public Works to fix the Boat Ramp so it can stay open more than one week so far this year. I don't know if that could be part of this project or not, but...
We'll take that up in Public Works, we'll probably decide that, I guess.
Yeah.
So, I'll make an approval based on the committee recommendation, and we, to go out, based on Finance Committee's recommendation, to go out for three different bids, an entirety, a bid in its entirety, and then separating out the, um, three options.
Is there a second? Second. Other discussion or questions?
I think on the, on the sidewalks, I'm not quite clear on the, you know, what, up to speed on the park project, but the ones across from the FIPS, that sidewalk has to be part of that project, it can't, I don't see how it could be, we could not wait on, on that particular sidewalk.
No, the, the parking stalls in the area you're questioning, Jim, there'd be an eight-foot wide pathway, if room does not, if there's not sufficient room, we'd go down to a five-foot sidewalk, there'll be one over the other.
Where those parking spots are, there would be, that would be the sidewalk then. It would, no, but...
Just like the ones across from Pier.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It just goes down because there's a retaining wall that I think will have to be built there.
There'd be a retaining wall that'd have to be built on the west side of the parking stalls.
And wasn't that already considered in the pricing?
Yes.
Was that, yeah, those, that part was already considered in this price.
Okay.
It was just a south end that we haven't factored in yet.
I see.
Good question. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll get the bids back, and we'll see what they come in at, and see what we can do. Discussion of item 6C, discussion, possible action of purchase of body camera systems, and we'll also put in there in the squad camera. Marty, do you want to take that?
One area issue on the Wisconsin Street, did you want to take that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I, let's go back to 6, I'd cross that off.
Yeah, right.
Discussion, possible action, amendment to state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Street project. Danny?
With the Wisconsin Street project, with the requirement of the Trans 75, which is the complete street specifications requirement now, if any projects that are, are assisted with federal funds, sidewalks and bike paths are required improvements along those street sections. The estimate, the construction estimate has been increased from $654,000 to $1,100,000 with the federal contribution to be capped at $880,000. So the project would go over 1.1 million in the construction phase of it, then the city has to pick up anything, of course, if it's less than, it's just the 80/20 consideration. The local share of the construction would be increased from 138,800 to 220,000 at the 80/20 split, again, if it goes over 1.1 million, the city has to pick up the local share. Again, the increase of cost, when the original application went in a few years ago, it did not have the sidewalks, pathway systems that were required, bike lanes. Then we were advised that that's a requirement of getting the federal, state funds now, so it does increase the local share cost for the construction aspect by about 82,000, but compared to paying for the project in its entirety, it's a fairly good deal.
I'm gonna move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Also include the budget allotment, we didn't mention that in Finance.
I move for approval and allotment of 200, for $220,000 out of our capital budget for the Wisconsin Street.
For 2015, just so we have an earmark.
2015 capital budget for the Wisconsin Street project.
So we have an earmark for next year, so we don't forget about it.
Yes.
We also, is, is that okay with us? Who seconded?
Yes.
Is that okay with you?
It's fine.
We also should look at our assessment policy for that street, how we're gonna handle it.
We've asked Mr. Sifko to start that.
Okay, thank you. Because we're getting a grant, how we're gonna assess?
Yes.
The improvements.
When is that planned to?
Next year, next year.
Okay.
It will happen next year, hopefully. It started in 2010.
Probably at the end of May, and they want to try to expedite it so that it's done before school starts up in the fall, since that's a main thoroughfare for the high school.
It's a little start in September.
Yeah. No comment.
No comments. We've been talking about this for a long time. Okay. Any discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we can go into the body, the body cameras and the squad car camera system. Ms. Chief Jensen, we'll take those two together if that's okay. We approved this in Finance, but why don't you update everyone?
Uh, we set out bids on both the body cameras and the in-car camera systems. We were opened on May 7th with the city administrator. We had 10 bids for body cameras and seven bids for the in-squads. As you can see on your issue sheet, they ranged anywhere from $2,300 to $93,000, or $93,000 for body cameras, $32,000 to $108,000 for the in-car camera system. After taking a look at the, the bids and looking at what our spec sheets were and what we thought would work for our department and meeting with the IT, uh, personnel, uh, my recommendation is, is that we buy both the Digital Ally Body Camera System and the Digital Ally In-Car Camera System. Uh, reason being is both systems will run on the same software. We'll be able to manage and process, uh, evidence that's, uh, captured on both systems at the same, the same software, so we don't have to have two different software systems running at the same time. Uh, one of the other features I kinda liked about it is that the in-squad system and the cameras, the body cameras can be linked together with an optional V-link that I'm gonna recommend as well. Uh, as I said, in finance, should, uh, our officers be called to an emergency situation and activate their emergency lights, which is one of the triggers for the in-car cameras to go off, it will automatically turn on their body cameras as well, so they don't have to worry about that in a high-stress situation. So, that's a kind of a feature that I really, uh, thought was very good. They met all our specs in regards to, um, everything we'd put in the bid sheet. Uh, they're not the lowest, they're not the highest, they're somewhere in that middle range. Um, but checking out with some of their other vendors that they have, they have the Wisconsin State Patrol bid. Um, North Hudson has their camera system, as does, uh, Richmond. I've talked to both their chiefs, they're very happy with their systems. They work extremely well. So, my recommendation is, is to go with Digital Ally, uh, in-car systems. Total with shipping is 45,202,70. Uh, body cameras are 22,440. I'm recommending that we purchase a server for them for 49,995. Uh, the optional View Link for 54,45, and I'm figuring on install of the cameras, systems. Uh, EAT will come over here and put them in somewhere between four to $500. I'll do it right in my garage downstairs. They said it'd be a couple days, it'll be done. I have all eleven cars outfitted with them. Uh, my total that I came up with is right around 83,650. So I'll be under the $85,000 mark that finance had set me at.
I move for approval based on finance committee recommendation.
Of 85,000, okay. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Let me see if there's a second first.
Second.
Okay, now go.
What's the, um, what's the benefit of this?
Well, the benefit of the, obviously the, the camera system is, is kinda twofold. One is, is that you're gonna be able to collect evidence on the scene. Traffic stops, drunk drivers. Um, if you go to a domestic situation, especially with the body cameras, you're gonna be able to capture, you know, the, the carnage within, without having to take a still photo. It's a lot easier to go in front of a jury with an actual video footage. The other, uh, option with that is, is that that evidence can be presented prior to trial, and a lot of times these cases don't even go to trial. So that saves us on overtime for our officers having to go to court. So, another feature obviously with it is, is that if we get a citizen's complaint that one of our officers was acting inappropriately, or didn't have proper recommendation for a stop or so forth, we can go back to the video footage and we've got an independent, um, eyewitness to the incident. We can look at it and say, well, yeah, the officer was right, or no, the officer was wrong, and we'll take corrective action with it.
How long is the, uh, data stored?
Um, our policy that we have, if it's something that does not need to be held on to, is 180 days, and then it can be purged. If it's something that needs to be held on for court, it depends on how the proceedings go, but usually evidence is held on for six months after trial's completed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief?
How is, how is the body camera activated when you're out of the car, like at the house, or?
If you're, if you're at the house, you'll have to reach over and touch a button that'll be on the camera itself. You just have to push it. But like I said, if you're going to an emergency situation and you have to activate the car camera system, it will automatically turn on the body camera system. So when they jump out of the car, the nice feature of that is if they pull up in front, say like one of our establishments downtown, they pull up front and the in-car camera's pointing like down towards the river, they're getting out of the car, their camera's already on, so we'll pick up the rest of the, the combatants fighting, or the people hurt, or so forth. So, it's, it's a really good system, and kinda looking forward to it. And they've said that there's upgrades coming into it so that the body cameras will, in the future, hopefully within the next year, be able to download right into the in-car camera system, which will upload into the, our system, which will be a wireless automatic remote.
Just a software upgrade, right?
Yeah, I believe it's just a software upgrade, correct.
That wasn't the right answer.
Don't prove me wrong, Marty, after all this.
I don't know. I said, I was told that was coming. It's not part of my bid.
Another 35,000 for that?
Don't.
No, no, I'd just be.
Oh, no, no.
Long two years, Marty. Don't do this to me.
Any other questions for Chief Jensen? I think we've, uh, gone through this and it was approved in, in finance to go out and get the bids and, or in, uh, our capital expenditure last fall.
That's right.
And so, this is the May and, or June, and we're ready to go with it, so. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You wanna stay there, we'll just do the car right now, too, and then we'll go to the, uh, we'll talk about the car. Discussion possible action of replacement of damaged squad. Squad car was, uh, involved in an accident. We received $25,700 and a replacement, uh, for the car, hopefully will be $20,700. We'll be able to outfit the car for no cost.
It, it shouldn't, it should be about the $25,000.
Yep.
Yeah. I, if the finance committee gave me, um, a recommended approval to go to Hudson Ford and ask if they'll give us the same bid as they did in the fall, which was the 20,990.
And that was in December, so we've, we're gonna use, utilize that bid if they'll give it to us again.
Right.
Marty will come back to us if they won't. And that was about $2,500 lower than everybody else, or 27?
$2,700 lower than everybody else.
So, I don't think we're gonna get any lower than that.
I'll, I'll move for approval.
Is there a second? Okay.
Thank you.
Tom's second.
Welcome.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have discussion possible action of renewal of Class B, Class C, a liquor license for Azula, Tequila?
Azul.
Azul, I'm sorry. Uh, DBA, bar and grill.
Move for approval.
Contingent upon the building and fire inspection, and any outstanding debt. Okay. Is, is seconded?
Yeah.
All right, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion possible action, a request for Public Works Park Director to allocate funds for equipment. Purchase for trailer, and Tom has, uh, had a trailer that he needs and, uh, replacing the one that had, needs brakes, and it isn't quite long enough. And it goes, uh, they were getting $1,500 in trade-in for a total, uh, price of $4,700, which they have $14,308.65 in their, in their budget. So it'll bring it under 9,000 for their equipment budget. But he feels important, uh, that this purchase is important.
Move for approval based on, uh, staff recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Now questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is discussion possible action on the purchase of an installation of a high-speed turbo blower at the wastewater treatment plant. Jim, we want you up here for this one. I don't wanna try and explain this one.
It's turbo, it's gotta be good.
Yep.
Installed a, uh, turbo blower, high-speed efficiency blower in 2011 for energy savings. It has performed since November of 2011 until today, virtually running non-stop, and has met all of our expectations. We did that under a 90-day trial period, we purchased it, and it has performed excellently. We have the need now for more additional high-efficiency air. And so, this, this project proposes to purchase an additional blower, a little bit larger capacity, to replace some 1979 equipment. Um, we would do this with, uh, an energy incentive grant of $21,479.27 with the balance paid out of our equipment replacement fund. We did receive three competitive bids. All of them qualified, all of them good, uh, good, uh, good quality pieces of equipment. But Arizona, and they also were very similar in efficiencies. So, but the Arizona USA Corporation blower for the amount of $82,013 was the lowest bidder. All else being equal, we would recommend purchasing that blower. Uh, accepting the, accepting their proposal, and then after a 90-day qualifying period, paying $82,013 for the blower, and then applying for our reimbursement grant from Focus on Energy for $21,476.71.
I don't know if you said, uh, it's about half the cost?
In the scheme of things, it's about half of the energy use of our current blowers. So, instead of, we, it was very new technology in 2011. So we wanted to just purchase, purchase one, try it. And that's the approach we took. It's been very successful. Now we wanna, to, to expand that.
Questions for Jim?
I have a question, because I'm naive on this one. The blower, it, is this what blows, when you say more, the better? Is this, is this was blowing out into our environment, or is it internal?
It's, it's applying air into, uh, a mixture of microorganisms and influent wastewater.
Okay.
So, it's providing, mixing in the tanks, and it also provides dissolved oxygen for the microorganisms so that they can biologically do their job of.
Go down there and love show you.
Be water clean.
I don't want to.
So that's what, that's what the, that's what the blowers are doing.
How big is a turbo blower?
Clean the other air.
Okay, so, in relationship, the equivalent single-stage 1979 blower that we have, approximately six feet long, uh, three feet wide, and about four feet high. The new turbo blower is about two feet long, one and a half feet high. And it's, uh.
Twice as efficient?
Yeah. But, it turns, this is what, yes, it, it makes you a little skeptical. It has an airfoil bearing, it doesn't have, uh, greased bearings. So it's riding, the bearings, the shaft is riding on an air pocket, and, um, it's turning at 36,000 RPM.
And it never shuts off, right? Or, or not?
It's 'cause there's nothing in there to break, it's running on air.
Running on air. So, it's, no, there's virtually nowhere on that.
You said 50% savings, what is, what's the dollar amount?
A dollar amount? Well, in the, uh, was calculated using, if, this is a 2,000 cubic foot per minute blower, which we are not quite at that needed capacity yet, but if we were at that capacity, we needed 2,000 cubic feet per minute of air, it would provide an annual savings of about, of about $28,000 in energy usage.
Thank you.
Do we make a motion to approve yet?
I don't believe so.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
No second then.
Any other questions for Jim or discussions? Good job, Jim. That's, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, update on, uh, engineering, she's not here tonight.
Oh, I got her.
Okay. Well, we got the curb and gutter, go ahead.
Okay. She just had a, just a short update on third, uh, 2013 street improvement project, which is, uh, down on First Street. Curb and gutter removal is, should be completed. Uh, the removal should be completed, uh, the next day or so. Construction, uh, structures are being, uh, finished, and due to the high level of water, delay will be on a couple catch basins done by the boat launch. Um, the most current and, uh, schedule that we have, Zappa's will be removing, uh, removals by Thursday afternoon this week. Curb Masters will be doing, uh, finishing up cement work Friday or Monday, depending on the weather. Curb cut and patching will be cleaned up next week. Uh, the milling process should start the week of, uh, June 16th. There'll be some cleanup and adjustments after that, uh, which, uh, which means the paving, which should be June, uh, week of June 23rd, and the painting should be completed by, uh, June 30th.
Boy, they're cutting it close with the booster days downtown.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Tom. Anybody have any questions for Tom? Okay, discussion possible action on Resolution 7-14, resolution approving the CMAR annual report from the City of Hudson wastewater. Jim?
So, the compliance maintenance annual report, uh, measures the performance and tries to assess the level of compliance with our permit requirements for our utility. Our utility, again, consists of our 2.2 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant, approximately 60 miles of collection system piping, and 14 lift pumping stations. Uh, we do do that with a staff of four wastewater operators, one director, and support staff at City Hall. So the report itself is an evaluation tool, promotes awareness of utilities' responsibility and future needs. So it evaluates the utility in nine categories, assigns a letter grade to each category, and then an overall grade point average. Uh, the nine categories are influent loadings, affluent quality in biochemical oxygen demand, affluent quality in total suspended solids, affluent quality in phosphorus, biosolids management, preventative maintenance and staffing, operator certification, collection systems. Those eight categories, we received a letter grade of A, and never claiming to be perfect. In financial, the section of financial management, we had a letter grade of C. We, and that was due to not reviewing or, uh, reassessing our equipment replacement fund. Not that it's not adequately funded, but we had not formally, uh, altered the list of equipment in that fund. So I will be, uh, that needs to be done. I look forward to working with Neil on that, and, uh, we'll get that accomplished.
So on every other category, you were A, and then that was the only one that we didn't, uh, get the A?
That's.
Okay.
That's it. Um, so, uh, really, uh, really proud of the quality of treatment that we've accomplished. All of our parameters are significantly below our permanent limits, uh, doing it with a very lean staff, as I mentioned. It was, I do wanna talk a little bit about the staffing. It was kind of a trying year. We had, uh, an operator out with, uh, extended illness and injury. We had once, uh, one operator gone for medical leave at times, and then you get some applications thrown in. And with four operators, that makes for a pretty lean staff. And, uh, they, we accomplished that without adding any additional help along the way. So they should be commended for that. Um, we also provide this service with extremely low user rates. We are the lowest, we have the lowest user rate of anyone in Northwest Wisconsin, and certainly our surrounding communities by, uh, probably a factor of two. They're about double our rate. So, our, uh, customer should be very happy with, uh, getting that quality of service for that rate. We are also positioned very well to meet our current, uh, our future needs. Our user rates are adequate, uh, to provide for our operational expenses, and we do have fund balances in, in our various funds to, to meet our future needs. So I think we're positioned very well.
Um, the other, the other, other thing in our collection systems, we do have to, and by 2016, or in 2016,
I think it's August of 2016, have to comply formally with, uh, capacity management and operation and maintenance, uh, program. So we have to formalize it. We are doing, if you look in that section, we're doing all of most, almost all of the requirements for, for it, but it's not formalized as a document. So we will have to be doing that. Um, other than that, our permit is up for renewal. We have to have our application in, in January of 2015, uh, and it will be renewed by, hopefully by June of 2015.
Is that a one-year, three-year?
It's five-year.
Five-year, okay. Questions for Jim?
Oh, good job.
Yeah, I have to. Uh, first of all, I'm assuming that this is an internal evaluation?
Yes. We did have an annual inspection by the department, uh, it was in March or April. A letter was sent to Devon, concerning that inspection. Uh, that would, I probably should have supplied that with us.
Yeah. Do we ever, do we ever have an outside audit, you know, done on the system, you know, just like this, or?
An outside audit of the system.
What's the inspection consist of compared to this evaluation?
Well, the, all of the data, we have an audit done for our lab, so all of the data for the, the parameters in our permit, those are audited, uh, by the Department of Natural Resources. Um, as far as some of the other, um, uh, parameters in there, they are, as far as some of the other evaluations, they are internally done. Otherwise, you, you, we would have to, you know, spend resources to, to go outside to do that.
I was, I'm, not that we would wanna spend the money, but is it mandated somewhere that every so often somebody's gonna come in and, and do a very, this is a very thorough document, do a very thorough check of the system?
Right.
Report it to the state.
All right, it's reported to the state, but who comes back and looks at it? So that's.
Well, this, I mean, the document's reviewed by the department, it's approved, it's approved then by the department, um, and they will follow up on whatever they think they need to follow up on. I, I, I don't know.
Well, he says department, you're saying the State Department of.
Natural Resources is the overriding agency that.
Not his department.
Checks everything out.
We do audit, as I said, they audit our lab, go through all of our records, uh, and do a thorough audit of our lab, all of our testing, to verify that, that that is adequate.
But, Mike, I guess, I, I, I'm not sure if we're maybe talking different things, but the, the eight areas of evaluation were done internally. That's, that's my take. Yeah, okay.
Within the requirements by the DNR, which are approved, they go through that report and give you a grade, right?
Yes.
They go through and review our results.
They review our response, they review this.
So.
But they could at any time if they wanted to come in.
Yes, and they do an annual inspection, as I mentioned, they did that.
And the financials are audited every year?
Financials are audited.
Okay.
So the answer to you have is no, we don't have an outside person that comes in?
Not a third party, but a part of natural resources is the.
Okay.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Rule call?
Vanslow?
Yes.
Hoggitt?
Yes.
Webber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Horsett?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll move to approve resolution seven dash fourteen.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pros, motion carries. Thank you, Jim, good job.
Thanks, Jim.
Item eight B, discussion request by Hanson Brothers LLC for consideration by the City of Hudson for a possible waiver of the restrictive covenant on the Hudson Golf Course property in connection with possible residential development of golf course property. And this is for discussion only, we're not, there's a letter that we received from Jeff Redman, who represents the Hanson Brother Golf Course.
You should have all received a follow-up email on that.
Jeff, do you want to go through this?
Sure.
If you would, please.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Common Council. As you know, I represent the Hanson Brothers. I also have here tonight Hans Hagen and John Raff from Hanson, Hans Hansen Homes. So basically what's in the letter is, you know, the Hanson Brothers bought this property in two thousand ten, operated it, put a couple million dollars in trying to increase the cash flow, explored all kinds of different opportunities to improve the profitability of it, was unable to figure out a way to make a cash flow. Made the difficult decision last year to close the course, so it's closed this year. After that decision was made, engaged Greystone Commercial and Kevin Lacoss, literally sought out Hans Hagen, knowing that he's a great developer, that has successful projects here, and a month or so ago, we entered into a purchase agreement, of course contingent upon the city waiving the golf restriction. In connection with the purchase of the golf course property, the Hanson Brothers agreed that to impose a restrictive covenant, did not require them to operate the golf course, but said that they wouldn't do anything in the ten years that would interfere with the operation of a regulation golf course. The the corporation that sold the property, we knew that they were planning to dissolve after the sale. They've done that, so we provided for a successor enforcer, if you will, of that restrictive covenant, and the parties agreed that any change in the use of that property would require city approval as part of the zoning process and comprehensive plan process, so we, the sellers designated the city to be the enforcer when and if they dissolved, and they've since dissolved. So we, as I've indicated to the plan commission, and I believe the council before, never was the intention to seek a waiver of the restriction until we had a very specific project to bring to the city for approval. And we have that now, and was a little unclear, we anticipated filing this request in connection with the application for the Hans Hagen development, was asked to submit the letter in advance, which we've done, and appreciate the time to talk to you, and Hans is available to describe what kind of project he envisions for that property, if you would like to hear that.
I think for tonight's purpose, I think we want to talk about the process of whether or not we want to, the development is a separate issue, I think. It's whether or not we want to release our, or release the city, or release the Hanson Brothers from the six year, I think there's six years remaining.
Six years left, yes. And.
I mean, we, we have great experience with Mr. Hagen on the development.
And just so the council's aware, if the choo, city chooses not to approve that development, we're not asking for a waiver of the restriction. It's only if and when that project would be approved, that any waiver that we would ask for would become effective. So that's why it was a little unclear to me, the chicken or the egg?
Yep.
And so, and we were asked to submit this, so that's what we did. The, just so you know, the development is a couple hundred homes, mostly empty nester homes, estimated by Hans Hagen Homes to be about a sixty-five million dollar development.
Is there twenty-two acres that goes back to the Stone Pine Association, Jeff?
Doesn't go back to them, it's by covenant, it can't be used for anything other than a golf course. And so as part of this proposal, it's proposed as remaining as green space. My guess is the homeowners association doesn't really want it.
They don't want to pay taxes on it.
They don't want to pay taxes on it. So this would be, land in the proposal is, would be dedicated to the city and as park.
It's about twenty-two acres, isn't it?
Twenty-two acres, exactly, thank you.
So how would, are we not to discuss that part of it, just questions on that?
Can, I, I think the issue is, if we have no interest in releasing it, there's no sense talking about the other development.
Right.
And if we, we need to talk about that, and, you know, I just wanted, I think we also need to put this out to the people who live in that district, and for the entire city to come and get a chance to, because this was, I don't want to say short notice, but it was in pretty short time period, I don't know if everyone is aware of it, but I'd sure like all the folks that live along that area to have some input in what goes on there, and whether or not we want to change the agreement that was made in good faith by both parties four years ago.
Okay, so then can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Or question, and first, thank you, Mr. Hagen for coming. I live in one of your homes, so my questions are not based on you as a developer, I like, I love your homes, but I'm, have some frustrations with the situation, being on plan commission, and we've worked really hard to retain this golf course as we've approved some commercial on the front end, so it did kind of come unexpectedly to us. One of my questions would be, you made a statement, now that they've worked vigorously to retain this as a golf course, when they couldn't, whether, whatever their business dealings are, I don't, I don't remember seeing it marketed for sale as a, for someone to maybe purchase this and continue a golf course. It seemed to be marketed towards not continuing as a golf course, am I incorrect in that thought process? So, so why wouldn't they, if, and if it was a good faith agreement to maintain this as a golf course for ten years, why wouldn't they have seeked, actively seeked someone who would want to continue to run it as a golf course?
We, and the, we, the Hanson Brothers did not try to list it as a golf course. Lots of golf courses out there listed for sale as golf courses and other properties, all around the United States. Literally hundreds of golf courses are.
Are listed for sale?
Yeah.
What about in our area here?
I'm not aware of the ones locally. What we, what the Hanson Brothers did do is there's about a half a dozen professional golf managers in the Twin Cities that they approached to say, you know, maybe you're better than we are at managing golf courses, and got, and talked to them, and the ones that were interested in talking wanted financial assurance, basically a financial commitment that exceeded the losses that the Hanson Brothers had experienced in the prior, prior years of operation. So that just wasn't a economically feasible alternative.
Mr. Redman, would you be willing to provide those numbers to us, the losses?
I don't have them personally.
No, no, not tonight, but I mean, in the future?
Yeah, we can talk about who you, I'm happy to share who we talk to and.
No, no, I'm talking about the financial losses that, that took place, because that's the basis, I guess, that's one of the basis for the.
I don't have authority to offer those.
But I mean, to your clients, you could have.
Yeah, I would certainly ask, and, you know, I think would be appropriate to look at the financial performance of the golf course preceding their ownership. So it's, you know, lost money for a long time.
It, it lost money because of the service to debt, it did not lose money because of operational. And service to debt is the thing that caused the Hudson Golf Course to go under. And the calling in of the debt by the Associated Bank. If you look at the financials prior to the Hanson's buying it, it was forming, performing operationally fine. Service to debt was killing it.
And Hanson Brothers have no debt on the property.
Which makes me wonder how they couldn't make it operational when they had no service to debt, because they paid cash.
So.
Share that information.
Well, what's the other side of the coin here? What's the tax potential revenue to the City of Hudson if we turn it into a neighborhood?
If you took it at the value of sixty-five million, I think you could put in one point, any.
Sixty-five thousand times five, so three hundred thousand.
Full tax or?
Just the city portion.
About three hundred thousand.
Master plan call for that then? Does our master plan call for this to be the development?
Master plan called for recreational portion. Because of the current zone, it's R one one, family residential.
So we have to change our master plan.
Yeah, that would be part of the application process, we'd have to request amendment of the comprehensive plan. It is zoned R one now.
What's the city's portion right now that we get from the golf course?
About eighty-eight, well, the total taxes are eighty-eight thousand, Jeff, is that about?
Under a hundred, eighty, ninety thousand.
Twenty-two, twenty-three thousand.
So it'd be a pretty substantial change in.
Correct.
Well, but then you got to count in how, the maintenance of the development and a possible city park versus not maintaining.
No, I understand, just thinking out of.
It's significant more money.
Yes.
Yes.
And another park.
Can we back up a little bit and ask the city attorney the question? Help me understand this restrictive covenant release or the terms of it.
Okay. When the golf course was sold, the Hanson's agreed, it was negotiated to put a restrictive covenant on the golf course property, that the buyers, Hanson Brothers, would not do anything which would materially interfere with operating a golf course on that property.
And they signed that and agreed to that for ten years?
Yes, and gave enforcement rights because the golf club was going to, yeah, to the city. Now there's an opportunity to do something different. The city has, since it has enforcement rights, it could choose to waive the restrictive covenant for the purpose of allowing development as proposed, if that's, goes through the process and is approved. On the other hand, the city could decide, no, it doesn't want to do that. There's a couple, there's a provision whereby there's extraordinary, if there's extraordinary circumstances, the restrictive covenant can be terminated, but those circumstances aren't presented in this situation.
Okay, so the folks that, we talked about the Stone Pine addition, they don't want it more or less, that's going back to the city probably, if that were to happen. What about the folks that bought up in Golf View when they were buying to live on the golf course? I mean, was there anything that they had in their purchases that allowed some covenant?
I don't know anything about their, any private agreement, I mean, that's just.
I mean, I'd be kind of, I'd be kind of mad.
I wouldn't anticipate that on a residential property that they'd have any agreement.
But at the same, no, no, I, okay, I understand that, but I would be mad if I bought a house on a golf course and then all of a sudden it's developed.
That's why we have a public hearing.
I mean, if they have no enforceable rights with respect to that property, they can't just assume it's going to stay a golf course.
So you're saying there isn't, or we don't know?
We don't know, because we're not parties to those agreements.
Condition though on all those parcels that they each have an agreement with the former owners.
I can.
I doubt it, seriously.
I can confirm.
I'm just curious, I mean.
I can confirm that there are no.
There's got to be some concern up there.
On the properties to the west, there's no obligation, there's no, any documentation of record that suggests it has to stay as a golf course. There is about a five acre parcel that was acquired by the golf course from the Gagnons that we have, there's a restriction on, and we've started discussions with them to see.
Because that is some of the information I'd want to see as well.
Yeah, there's no, there, we have this restriction is the only one, and that little piece, there's five acres just to the east of the twenty-two acres, funny little triangle where the little pond is, that there's a restriction that applies to the Gagnons, and we've reached out to that family as well.
Which is why, and I mentioned last time, they are here, that if it does go into, if it does do anything before the six years, it would, it would sure better be residential versus commercial because of those residents that live and go, but I think, I would hope that we'd have a public hearing or something to hear from them on this. Also, my question is, you made a statement in there, in the, I don't, we don't have that contract in front of us to.
Oh, I do.
So you made a statement, and I should have wrote down the words, because, but when Randy started speaking, I lost it, but something, but it's like about internal, no, just that I forgot.
I have that.
Internal, that they would, can I just see the contract quickly and I'll find it and ask my question?
Extraordinary circumstances, is that what you're thinking?
Nope, it was prior to that, you made a statement.
Anyway, so when you figured that out, why don't, Jim, what did you have to question?
The question I have is, relates to the twenty-two acres in association, since most of the association is in my district, I'm quite concerned, and I'm a member of the association as well. But this is the first time I've heard any reference to the land having a covenant on it and not going back to, you know, being restricted and going back to the association, so I'm wondering where that document is.
That document is part of the land, you know, county records, there's not actually a reversion, so it doesn't actually go back to the association, it just can't be used for anything other than a golf course.
Or parkland, or is it only golf?
It has to be open space, it isn't golf, it's not golf course, I'm sorry.
Yep.
If it ceases to be used for a golf course, it has to remain open space.
To be clear, if we do not overturn the restriction, there's another six years left in the contract that it, it can't be anything but a golf course. Is that accurately stated?
Unless we changed it.
Right, but if we don't change it, then it, it can't be used for anything but a golf course until the, the ten-year.
Right, maybe people want to buy a golf course by then.
It could be used for ancillary things in the documents, such as cross-country skiing or other things that wouldn't interfere with the use as a golf course.
I see.
So there's some examples in the document about.
Is there any inkling from your client that they would try to sell it as a golf course then, or?
I would not expect them to do that.
Okay.
They would hold it. For eight, for ninety thousand dollars a year, they would hold it, and if the city doesn't want to approve the Hans Hagen development, then they would just hold it.
So at this point though, Jeff, you're saying that these folks are going to just leave it and grow? They're not going to take care of it as it sits?
They would take, they would take care of it, they aren't going to mow it as a golf course though.
This is a valuable right for the City of Hudson, and I think we need to have people from the city come and comment on it.
I agree too.
I don't see that there's any reason to continue the discussion tonight.
Yeah, unless anybody has any more questions or comments.
Can I have, ask a question of Hans?
Yep.
If this were to wait six more years and the housing market were to continue to be successful, would you still be interested in this property in Hudson? It's a very big if and a very big, but you've been in Hudson, you've had two subdivisions here. Hudson's a growing community, and if, and the market hopefully is only going to start improving soon. Is it something that you would keep an active eye on, I guess, is my question.
Hans, hey, I, I think the difficulty is one of time.
Right.
And basically, our goal is to give Jim's turbo to see if it really will work. The difficulty is, is today, as an example, interest rates are very competitive. The market is relatively strong, much stronger than it's been in the last six or seven years, and that's because there's a shortage of inventory, so, and prices are going up. So as I kind of look at this, is the question, in six years, something's going to happen to this, because the covenant goes away. In the meantime, there is no covenant that says it has to be used as a golf course. It can't be used for anything else other than a golf course, other than a few things that Jeff has eluded to. So the question is, does this city council, or the common council and mayor make a decision on what the land use is going to be today? Or do you basically wait for six years and wait for the mayor and common council in six years to make a decision?
Right.
And in the meantime, the question is, what is the financial impact? Now, the mayor and council aren't going to make a decision based on solely taxes. That doesn't make sense, it's basically what makes use in terms of, what's the sensible use for that property? And so if, the, the difference, if you would like what we're proposing, and you haven't seen what we propose, we may have to do that at some future date. seen what we propose, we'd be glad to do that at some future date. The question is, if you put that off for six years, there's literally millions of dollars of revenue that they, that's lost in terms of taxes. Now, the city only gets 20%, but the school district gets some, county gets some, so we're all citizens of the same community. That's a long answer to your question, and I hope it's direct enough, that I think six years is very difficult to tell what will take place. We've, I've seen 18% interest rates, and now we're seeing 4% interest rates for homes. Now is a good time, but you would expect me to say that as.
Well, no, yeah, but no, I, my, you, you didn't answer it, and I agree with you that I would, I am nervous, I would be nervous in one aspect only to know, I don't plan to be here in six years, that'd make me some people happy, I don't know. But whoever is sitting here, I'm, don't really, I would not like to see a big box go in behind those homes, is my point, or something like that. I'd want to see a development like Hans Hagen Homes. But there's a principal base here too, which makes this a very difficult situation. And I, from my understanding, and I'm not a golf course member, there was promise, there was more than a handshake agreement here, there was an understanding that's been broken, and I think it's going to be a very, it's not going to be an easy road traveled here until, you know, we have a public hearing in here, what people have to say, I guess, is what I'm suggesting.
Would, maybe, yes, or?
I just wanted to make one. So from time to time, I hear people saying that the Hanson's promised to operate the golf course for 10 years. So I'm just going to read from the restrictive covenant quote, verbatim, "Nothing herein shall require property owner to operate an 18-hole regulation golf course during the restrictive term." So there's no obligation to operate a course. They hope to do it, they spent literally millions of dollars trying to make it work, and hope to make it work. In their mind, they couldn't make it financially feasible, they're spending their money, not other people's money, not borrowing money to make it work. So there wasn't an obligation to keep it a golf course.
No, that's why I said a good faith.
Well, in a nutshell, we have an opportunity presented to us, and we can either act upon it or kick it on down the road. So if, but if we don't act on it, then we've passed on what it could be today, so.
So one of the things I would propose that we do for our next meeting is take some time, maybe set an hour, if that's enough time aside for folks to come in, if, we'll put a public notice out, we'll put it on the website, hopefully Randy will have it in the paper that people, if they have an interest, will show up here.
Yep. At the beginning of the best council meeting.
Formal public hearing?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's formal, I, I think.
Well, a noticed public hearing.
Yep.
We don't have to notify the property owners, but it will be noticed as the.
Rich, did you have something you want to say?
I, I guess I, unfortunately, I was a member of the Hudson Golf Course Board of Directors at the time this went down, and I just have to say that, you know, based on my experience and the discussions face-to-face with people at that time, that this first paragraph in this letter certainly does not portray the reality of any of the situation. So in my personal view, I ignore everything he has here. Sure, they may have spent money, did they try to run it as a golf course? Absolutely not. They had no intention of this being a golf course, and that's perfectly clear in my mind, and I was involved face-to-face, and I know what happened, and I know what's going on. But getting past that, and that, that's really irritating, okay?
Yep.
So let's get past that, I'm on the city council now and I have to worry about the city. So we should move forward with the public hearing, try to do what's best for the city at this point in time. I think it's unfortunate, the city's losing an asset that I think was a draw to our city, and brought people here to recreate and spend time and visit our businesses. And I think that's unfortunate, that we're losing that opportunity. Needless to say, I, I, I can't be nothing but upset with this, but I'm, I'm smart enough to know now we've got to deal with what's best for the city.
Jeff, you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask as part of the public hearing, I think it's fair if we would ask Hans Hagen Homes to present what that alternative plan is, to, because we don't, aren't asking for the waiver of the restriction, except in connection with that particular proposal. So at least I think that Hans should be afforded the opportunity to share what, what his plans are.
Everybody okay with that?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's critical, this is what we're trading.
I'd like to see it earlier, I mean, if we could have it emailed to us, that'd be great.
I'm sure we could, we could have that email to us.
If you don't think it's appropriate to do it tonight, that's fine, but I would like to see it.
Yeah, I.
Jeff, will you ask your client to share the financial information you talked about earlier?
Sure.
And if they are agreeable, if your client's agreeable with sharing that, can you get it to us sooner rather than later? Thank you.
Ship it to me, and then I can email it to you.
Would that have to be kept confidential?
Anything that, it's up to them, whatever they give to us then would become public, so that's going to be up to the.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it would be nice to have, I mean, you're asking for basically a personal, I mean, this is their personal business, so you're asking for personal financial.
Once, once I send it out, it's public.
If there's a way that we can do it under color of confidentiality, but they may not care.
Yeah, well, they're asking for a significant thing, so they might have to give up something that's significant.
So just, I'm sure the public hearing is on the proposal, their proposal or the proposal to waive the, or a combination of both, just so I know how to.
I would say it's to waive our, the main thing we have to get down first.
Yeah, in connection with the Hans Hagen.
Okay, okay. Because I don't think they're going to be trying to approve that, that's got to go to planning commission first.
No, you wouldn't be approving it, it's just that.
Gather input.
Mr. Hagen wants an opportunity, or the Hanson brothers would like an opportunity to present what's proposed to go in its place, if the waiver is granted in connection.
I'll run it by Catherine, just to make sure language is correct.
Is everybody okay with that now?
So we'll do that at seven o'clock, and then however long it takes, that'll be up to the mayor.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, can I just make one clarification?
Sure.
The waiver won't actually be granted until this hot, if, what you're giving them is a signal that, yes, we're willing to consider this, and the development can go through the process. If the development isn't approved, there will be, the waiver still stands, just so we're all on the same page.
And it's my impression that the desire of the city was to take that action on the golf restriction, because if the common council says, no way, no way.
Right.
Then why waste a lot of time of a, you know, prominent local developer? But so that motion would be, you know, to approve the waiver if and only if, but no promise to approve the Hans Hagen Homes development.
Yeah, if it's a clear no, certainly that can happen.
Well, that's why I wanted to try and keep it not centered on that, because if this group doesn't, has no interest in doing that, then there's no sense wasting our time and wasting their time.
Well, it's pretty clear, it's either a housing development or X.
Yeah, and X scares me.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. All right, communication for future agenda items, council members. Anybody? I have one, I have received a call today from Jamie Johnson, the president of the city, or the city, the school district, and would like to meet with us as a joint body to talk about proposal at the dog track site. And he picked, he gave me two dates that would, they would be available to be at, be June 9th or June 19th. And it's a Monday night, and the meeting would be here, and I'd like to see if we can get TV on for that. And it's a discussion with no action to be taken, just a general idea of how, how this body and that body is going to come across with a proposal of a potential development at that site.
I'm here the 9th, not the 19th.
And the 9th is better for me as well.
9th works.
I like the 9th.
9th?
Next Monday at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock here. Would you check with the cable, to see, to make sure we can have cable?
And I will coordinate with the school district as far as notices.
We got to do notification. Catherine, do you see any issues with that? Just as a.
No, just notice it.
Yeah, okay.
There's.
But no action, just discussion.
No real action, just discussion.
A potential of a school facility at the.
Dog track site.
At seven, like normal?
Seven o'clock, it'll be in this chamber. We're going to try and get it on television, so we have good information for everybody to see what's going on.
If it can't be on television, I'm going to have a problem with that.
No, we just need to coordinate with Nate. I'll get ahold.
Is there going to be an agenda?
Uh, yes. I'll get that agenda from, we'll try and put that together, Jamie and I will try and put that together, and we'll send that out to you. I, I think it's, it's on the dog track site, will be some of the, the potential development for the dog track site, as far as, you know, I guess we'll wait and see what, I, I don't know exactly what they've got.
True.
But they wanted to talk about it, so, and that, this was my idea, that we get together and work together on it, and if we, again, if our body says, this isn't something we want to do, let's not, let's not go down the path that we went on last time. So that's what we're trying to work together on it, whether it makes sense or not from our perspective. And I believe we'll see the plan on the 9th, so, yes, sir?
I may have erred earlier in not having the minutes of the, of the communications group exchanged, but, or brought out, but there's a significant, a significant thing that we're going to do, and we're telling the school board that we are taking back the programming of Channel 6, because they are not, this, the school district has not maintained that, and we are certain that we will lose it. It's in the minutes there, but just, you should know that. Very, very concerned that we would lose that whole channel if we don't maintain it as, run it as it's supposed to be run, and they, they are not doing that.
Maybe we can put that on the agenda too.
Well, we think you could put on the agenda.
Yeah? What's that?
The second RSO, I don't know, we're not ready for that.
What's that?
Second officer.
Oh, that's, no.
That's going to go to public safety.
That's got to go to public safety first, right? Communication for city attorney, city staff, administrator.